Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates running for Anoka City Council. I'm Linda Rogers of the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area chapter of League of Women Voters, and we sponsor this forum along with our co-sponsors, the North Suburban Optimist Club and the North Metro Chamber of Commerce. A quick note to those of you who have watched Meet the Candidates over the years. The COVID situation necessitated a couple of changes this year. There is no live audience. We are taping this forum with a skeleton crew appropriately spaced and masked off-camera. Also, the timing of the forum is early in the election season so that all voters can have information about candidates before casting their votes, regardless of when they cast their votes. All candidates were invited to this forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. And that's what this evening is about: informing voters. If you're interested in the League, visit our webpage at l w v a b c m n dot org. Women, men, yes, we welcome men too, and young people are invited to join. This election, City of Anoka residents will be electing two at-large members to the city council. These seats are currently held by Mark Freeburg and Brian Wesp. Mark Freeburg is not running for reelection. The candidates are Sam Scott, Greg Tomlinson, Jeff Weaver, and Brian Wesp. Greg Tomlinson was unable to be with us but has provided a statement which will later be read by our moderator. The candidates will answer several introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the League of Women Voters, North Suburban Optimist Club, and the North Metro Chamber of Commerce. We will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to one minute, and candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. And now I'll hand it over to our moderator, Karen Varian.
I'm Karen Varian, a League of Women Voters member and a resident of Blaine. I would like to welcome the Anoka City Council candidates Sam Scott, Jeff Weaver, and Brian Wesp. We will start the forum with the questions the candidates were given in advance, and you'll have one minute each to answer those questions. Before we start though there, I would like to read the comments that were submitted by Greg Tomlinson. He was unable to appear tonight, but he did prepare this written statement. "I am a former educator who now works in IT. I volunteer at my daughter's school with watchdogs, which is dads of great students. I am very passionate about being a positive male role model to those that need one and working with an organization that fosters this. I am seeking this office to be a positive voice of common sense for the people of Anoka, an attempt to bring politics back to the regular people instead of the elite. I would like to see Anoka prosper, keeping the city safe with well-funded police and fire departments while keeping property taxes low. I would like to reduce and eliminate waste in all its forms." We will now give each of the candidates an opportunity to answer the introductory questions. The first one is, describe your background and community involvement. And we will start with Sam Scott.
Thanks Karen for the question. I also thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum today. My name is Sam Scott, and I'm running for city council of Anoka. I've lived here in Anoka for most of my life. After graduating from Anoka High School, I joined the Army, working in intelligence and serving one tour of duty in Iraq as a special liaison to battlefield commanders on a tactical-psychological operations team. After returning from Iraq, I finished up my bachelor's degree in finance and my MBA from Carlson School of Management at the University of Minnesota. I've used my background in finance and management, working in banking and corporate finance, before starting out on my own as a business owner. During that time and after, I married my high school sweetheart, Crystal, and was blessed with a wonderful daughter, Ava. My desire to stay involved in my community didn't stop with the military. I currently serve as board treasurer at the Montessori Renaissance Academy, as well as vice-chair for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go on to Jeff Weaver.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Weaver. I'm a 60-year resident of the City of Anoka. My wife, Robin, is an elementary school teacher at Lincoln School right here in the City of Anoka. We have two married daughters. I work for a small, family-owned business who has our offices right on Main Street in the City of Anoka. I'm a past member of the Anoka City Council. I'm a past member of the Anoka Housing and Redevelopment Authority for 11 years, and I am one of the founding members of the Anoka Heritage Preservation Commission, which is charged with protecting one of Anoka's greatest assets: its history. I'm an Eagle Scout from Anoka's Troop 204. I'm a current member of the Northern Stars President Council, Boy Scouts of America, and was the former district chairman of the Three Rivers District, Boy Scouts of America. I'm proud to be one of the founding members of the City of Anoka's very popular Waterfall for Warriors program, and I'm a dedicated volunteer for all the events that take place in the City of Anoka every year. Anoka's a diamond for which I have a great passion for that continues to need polishing. As an Anoka City Council member, you can count on me for being Anoka's biggest cheerleader.
Thank you. Brian Wesp.
Thank you Karen, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Brian Wesp. I'm currently on the Anoka City Council, and I've been on the city council for the past four years. I started my community involvement in the City of Anoka in 1992 on the library board. My wife and I, Haley, have been married for 33 years. We have two children, Patrick, who's 24, Kelly, who is 26 and married to Sam, and their little son, S.J., our grandson, who live in the City of Anoka. I have been involved in community politics for about 25 years. I'm a member of the Anti-Crime Commission. I'm a board member of Youth First, and I've strived to be involved in Anoka in many ways. My father, grandfather, myself, my son, all have served our country in the armed forces. I'm pleased to be on the Anoka City Council, and I look forward to your support in November to continue my work on the Anoka City Council. Thank you.
Thanks. Next question is, why are you seeking this office? And we will start off with Jeff Weaver.
Thank you very much. The City of Anoka needs a council member that is committed to being fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money. We are living in unprecedented times, and now is the time the residents and businesses need a strong council member who can help the city navigate through these uncharted waters. Fiscal disparities and local government aid are two of the funding sources which the city receives from the state. Any changes to the formula at the state level could be a financial train wreck for the taxpayers of the City of Anoka. With a preliminary city levy greater than 3%, and a new proposed debt levy greater than 10%, taxpayers could be challenged and see a substantial property tax increase in the coming years. Anoka needs a council member who understands the housing needs of both single-family homeowners and renters, and is committed to responding immediately to the residents contacted with an issue, staying laser-focused until the issue is resolved to the taxpayers' approval.
Thank you. We will go on to Sam Scott.
Well, thank you for the question. Good question, why am I seeking office? I've lived here in the community for many years and plan on living here for many years to come. I'm seeking this office because I want to address the current shortcomings of city governance, as well as build upon its successes for future generations. Some of the issues I want to address that current and past leadership have been reluctant to include putting money needed into fixing our roads, maintaining and enhancing our parks, and encouraging more community involvement through volunteer events, community sports, and multicultural events. The city needs a new voice in leadership to help make this happen. I feel I'm uniquely qualified to work on these issues, given my background on the Parks and Recreation Board, my time spent advising government in Iraq on civic issues, my academic and business background, and as a vested member of this community with young children. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your goals for Anoka's future? And this...
Do I get a chance?
Oops, I'm sorry, I'm going already. See, I told you I needed reminding.
Thanks.
So, okay, we'll go over to, yes, Wesp, Brian Wesp.
Thank you. Why am I seeking office? I'm enthusiastic and I'm passionate about the City of Anoka. I always have been, from a small child until this very day. One of the main things that I remember about Anoka that was always special to me was Rick Sorenson. Rick Sorenson won the Medal of Honor during World War II. Not many communities can say that, and that's what makes Anoka one of the best places, I think, to live. We stand on the shoulders of many great people who have lived in this community and hopefully will live in this community in the future. And that's really my passion, is to continue to create a community that people can live in, feel safe in, feel comfortable in, enjoy, and that's why I want to be on the city council. It's important that we have a budget that is responsible, and it's important that we continue to create our community and our community events that allow us to enjoy this community. That's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you. Did I get everybody now with that question? Okay, I told you I was gonna mess it up one of these times, so thanks for keeping me on the ball here. So, the next question is, what are your goals for Anoka's future? And I have that. We're starting with Brian Wesp for this question.
All right, thank you. What are my goals for the City of Anoka? Every year as a city council member, we're asked to create goals and aspirations for our community, to see the direction, at least have a target in the direction that we want our community to go. My first one, first and foremost always, is continued responsible in budgeting and spending the taxpayers' money. If we aren't responsible in spending and budgeting our taxpayers' money, then we don't know what can happen. It can get out of control, we can get into positions where we don't have the money to back up the things that we need to do. Continue to be vigilant with streets and roads. Over 20 years, our council has developed streets and roads and put money aside, so we have quality streets and roads, and sometimes we don't have those. I have to put on my glasses. Growth of a strong, safe, and vibrant downtown. Without our downtown, Anoka doesn't flourish, and we need to be safe and strong and vibrant.
Thanks. We'll go on to Sam Scott.
Thank you very much. My goals for Anoka are to make sure our residents feel included and safe, to build upon our community spirit through volunteerism and community events, and to make our city an even better place to live and work. I want to make sure our government prioritizes, through our budget, the ability to keep our downtown clean, our parks well-maintained, our roads in good condition, and to develop our city with the spirit of a historic river town in mind. Some of my immediate goals include expanding the Parks and Recreation Budget to adequately maintain the parks we currently have, introduce city-led volunteer events, and encourage community involvement while cleaning up our city, and to speed up the maintenance of our roads. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff Weaver.
A 0% levy is always my number-one goal. Keeping city spending in line should be no different than each of us does around the kitchen table on payday. Simply said, you cannot spend more than you take in. Reducing the amount of rental in the City of Anoka by converting non-owner, single-family homes back to owner-occupied is a program now offered by the HRA. This needs to continue and stay strong. Another one that's very important is keeping our electric rates lower to our customers and businesses than our competitors. Making sure that we keep our SRP assessments below 25% and keeping our SSIP assessments at 0%. These are all part of the street projects that we do every year and have done for the last many, many years to enhance our roadways. And bringing new ideas and events to the historic downtown and entertainment district like the enhanced Christmas tree lighting, the Rockin' on the Rum, the Food Truck Festival, along with the restaurants, sidewalk seating, and parklets bring in new customers to Anoka.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to the other questions, and candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. And if you need me to repeat a question, just ask, okay? So, the first question is, you discussed your goals for Anoka's future. What is the goal you would put at the top of your list, and how could the council achieve this goal? We'll start with Jeff Weaver.
As I said, with my number-one goal, it's always at 0%. And that is just an indicator to staff that they better sharpen their pencil when they come with their proposed budgets to the City of Anoka. From what I've heard from this year's proposed budgets, the levies are challenged. With a general levy that's greater than 3%, and a new proposed debt levy greater than 10%, that adds up to almost 14%. And that is gonna be a challenging number to bring down to make sure that folks' property taxes don't increase disproportionately to the value of those homes and make it difficult for them to be successful. My number-one saying is, if the taxpayers are successful, so is the city.
Thanks. Brian Wesp.
Thank you. Continued responsibility in budgeting and spending has always been my number-one priority. Simply stated, this community costs a lot to run, but we can't and we don't have a blank check. We simply have to be mindful of the taxpayers and the values that they get for what they pay for. If we aren't, then we're out of control. We have to be able to say that our taxpayers and the citizens of Anoka appreciate how their money is spent in this community, and I do believe that it is. This year has been a year of interesting circumstances with the COVID virus, and how do we manage that when people are out of work, when they can't pay their property taxes? I have advocated that we spend down the budget this year and not have it overinflated because of the circumstances that are proposed in front of us this year.
Thanks. Sam Scott.
Thank you for the question. My number-one priority, if I were to be on city council, would be to make sure that we prioritize our public infrastructure. You know, we've made commitments over the years to place roads on the streets, to build parks in communities. And in my mind, a lot of that commitment also deals with maintaining those over time and making sure that we spend adequate resources. If we're gonna put a street down, we wanna make sure it stays in good condition over time. Same thing with our parks. You walk around to the parks in Anoka, some are in great condition. A lot of our city staff are making sure that it keeps in great shape. But there are other parks that have missing swings, that have paint chipping, graffiti, all kinds of things that we are right now inadequately staffed, or if not inadequately staffed, non-prioritizing of some of the community amenities that I feel that help our community members flourish in Anoka. Thank you.
Thanks. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community. We'll start with Brian Wesp.
Thank you. I have never owned or operated a small business in the City of Anoka. I've always been an employee of a corporation, but I do currently work for a small business in the Enterprise Park named Pump Tech. And we have to be mindful at that company on how we spend our money. I've always, though, been an advocate for Shop Anoka First. I think that's one of the finest things that we can do as citizens of a community, is support our local businesses. This year, as we were facing the crisis of restaurants being shut down, for instance, in the community, the council came together with the community to put together outside seating, because at the time, that was the governor's rules for opening restaurants. In collaboration with the restaurants and the council, we worked together to get these businesses open and serving and making money. Thank you.
Sam Scott.
Could you please repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Well, thank you very much for the question. I currently own a small business in Anoka. It's a small home health agency downtown Anoka, as well as the commercial building it resides in. I've been owning and managing that for the last four-plus years, and I feel it's very vitally important to keep our small businesses thriving in Anoka. Like, you know, it's a common refrain, is that it's a lot easier to keep small businesses in our town than to attract new ones. So I wanna make sure, through my own advocacy, that we try to keep our small businesses in business. A few months ago, I did address city council, similar to other kind of COVID-19-related efforts, on behalf of a few of the local restaurants in town, to try to figure out creative and different ways to keep small businesses, like our restaurants and our entertainment district, afloat and surviving through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff Weaver.
As I said earlier, I work for a small, family-owned business that owns and operates commercial buildings, and I've got a lot of experience in downtown businesses and working with new entrepreneurs, existing businesses, and people who just have a big dream and a vision and wanna go out on their own. And there's nothing more important than watching small businesses flourish and be successful. And as I said earlier about the tax piece of the puzzle, if a small business is successful, so am I. And one of the things that the city can do that really helps small businesses is not be too intrusive with rules and regulations and other parts of city government that can tie the hands of small business owners and make it very difficult to do business.
Thank you. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate? Start with Sam Scott.
Thank you for the question. If elected to city council, there's a number of things I would try to do to promote a healthy business climate, some of those being introducing new events to downtown Anoka to encourage more people to come here in the off-days, let's say, on the weekends. You know, Anoka right now does a lot of things, unfortunately due to COVID-19, let's say the car show. But one of my ideas would be to introduce a very robust and healthy farmer's market to downtown, to help bring people into downtown Anoka that may not otherwise, to have other events that keep people in our town shopping, keep our small business owners thriving, and to just overall enhance the quality of life for citizens, with something like a farmer's market that's a lot more robust than we currently have. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff Weaver.
Could you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. If elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate?
One of the things that's extremely important in saving Anoka is Anoka has become a destination for people. So, special events have become the marquee trademark for the City of Anoka, whether it's Wednesday night, Rockin' on the Rum, Sunday nights, concerts in the park, the Food Truck Festival, which has been canceled, the River Fest, the Jam by the Dam that took place, which hasn't taken place this summer. Again, a lot of events have been canceled. The farmer's market was a COVID casualty, car shows a COVID casualty, and they all wanna come back, they'll all come back, but having staff be inviting and easy to work with those that wanna put on an event is extremely important to the City of Anoka and its success.
Brian Wesp.
Thank you. My third goal is the growth of a strong, safe, and vibrant downtown. Our downtown is the lifeblood of Anoka, along with the neighborhoods that we have. The development in downtown Anoka is critical to what businesses do. But if you think about what we've done in the City of Anoka, because we have docks on the Rum River, we have the Mississippi River, we attract people in a way that most cities would hanker to have, the snowmobile corral, of all things, in the winter, people snowmobiling down the Rum River to come into the City of Anoka. I would continue to work with our Chamber of Congress, with our staff, with our small businesses, to say, let's create and come up with ideas that allow us to bring people into this town. The tree lighting is a great example of that. We've also offered our small business restaurants the ability to have a marketing budget, if they choose also, the city council has, in working with our small businesses within town.
Thanks. What do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Anoka? And as an elected official, how would you help solve this issue? Jeff Weaver.
You know, one of the greatest assets we've got in the City of Anoka are the two rivers. And those two rivers provide endless hours of recreation to kids that wanna take advantage of, whether that's swimming, fishing, tubing, or just doing any number of other activities that happen in the City of Anoka with these two rivers we've been blessed with. There's also great ballparks. So, encouraging more youth activity is wonderful. We've got great support in groups like ARAA Outdoors, which provides baseball and other activities. They're even getting into outdoor activities and are providing opportunities for those youth that don't play stick-and-ball sports to go fishing and/or even offer firearm safety and some waterfall hunting. So, Anoka has a lot of great opportunities for kids, and we need to keep promoting them.
Brian Wesp.
The greatest need for the youth in the City of Anoka, I think, is to understand what its community offers. In this community, the City of Anoka has offered youth over the years great opportunities to succeed, whether that be athletics, academics, whatever the case may be. But that's always been tied in with the school district. I think one of the examples of that is Goodrich Field. There is not a more unique place to play fall sports than Goodrich Field. And it's not only the playing on Goodrich Field, but it's also in the stands and observing the games as they're being played through high school. But I think as the city, and I'm working with, in conjunction with our police department, to have a connection with our school district, to enhance our relationship with the city and the school district, so our youths aren't left out. They do have opportunities to work with the City of Anoka and the district. Thank you.
Thanks. Sam, Scott.
Thank you very much for the question. In my opinion, some of the greatest needs and challenges for our youth that we could address as far as the city and city councils is concerned, is providing more opportunity for them to get involved in our community and to feel a piece of ownership with how the community is governed in the first place. Some of these could be offering potentially a rotational seat on a committee to give them a voice at the seat of governance itself, to encouraging our younger people to get involved in the community through things like painting. Painting, for example, the pedestrian underpass, and I know Anoka Halloween knows a lot of that, but promoting our youth arts and our youth sports on a city level to provide opportunities for parents to show off their proud children's work, and for our kids and children in our community to also show off their own work, too. Thank you.
Thanks. What would you suggest as a possible remedy to homelessness in our community? Brian Wesp.
That's a challenging question, because we are a county seat. And being a county seat, there are people that come in for services through the county that may not live in the City of Anoka. The good thing about the City of Anoka already is that we do have established places that can help people that aren't homeless, whether that be the Anoka Mission, Hope for Youth, or the Stepping Stone. We do have the ability to help people, if they choose, to find work. The City of Anoka offers seasonal employment on a regular basis and is always looking for people to work within the city, whether that be the parks, the golf course, et cetera. So I think we do have things in place today, and the city works in conjunction with those organizations to help look at homelessness and how we can better take away the homelessness problem, if that is, in the City of Anoka.
Sam Scott.
Well, thank you very much. That's a very difficult question. Like Brian said, homelessness is a tough thing that has been with us for a very long time. If I were to be elected city council, one of my priorities of trying to address this issue would be to prioritize social services outreach and making sure we take a proactive approach to find out our homeless population and see what their needs are, and to figure out firstly, what services would they already qualify for that they're unaware of, to make out firstly, what services would they already qualify for that they're unaware of to make sure they can get back on their feet, to get working, to get volunteering with our community. Also with partnering with private organizations. Brian West did a really great job mentioning some of our local private organizations that do a great job at trying to address homelessness in the best possible way. Doing some of these partnerships also helps our homeless youth and our homeless population get great job experience and to network with people in the community that might be able to offer them a hand up. Thank you very much.
Jeff Weaver?
You know, the city of Anoka does a remarkable job right now advocating for those that are challenged. You've got some great youth organizations, Hope for Youth, you've got Youth First, but you also have beside Stepping Stone, which has 62 or 66 beds up at the regional treatment center area, and those are some of the only beds that are available in the county. So you have people that come from all over, but you also have Haven for Heroes, which advocates for veterans who've got some challenges at the time, and there's a cottage for men and cottage for women and a cottage for families. And so we have really stepped up to the plate, let's say that. You've stepped, the city has really stepped up to the plate and done a lot for those that are challenged, and we need to continue to stay focused on providing those good opportunities that we have right here in our city, but encourage other cities to also get involved and do the same thing. We should be a great model for what we're doing.
Thanks.
Yep.
Considering recent events, how would you address racism in Anoka? Sam Scott?
Well, thank you for the question. Appreciate it. You know, there are, you know, ultimately, that's something we have to live with and figure out different ways to remedy as best we can some of our own personal biases. You know, a lot of what I've found through my experience, through being in the Middle East, through being in the Far East, all over the world, I've always found that finding commonalities help to overcome some of the differences and personal biases that we have. You know, with that in mind, one way that I think the city could help to address some of the racial inequities and issues that our people face include things like having our community gatherings and getting to know your neighbors through these events, some of the things we do, you know, the National Night Out, other events that are rocking on the rum, things like that, and encouraging perhaps more multicultural music events would help to have our citizens be introduced to other cultures in our community. Thank you very much.
Jeff Weaver?
That's a great question, and it's a question that I think all of us in this room are appalled at what happened last March is when the George Floyd incident happened in Minneapolis. And in Anoka, it is a very diverse community. It's very much a blue collar community, and you see that because of we've got a lot of affordable housing in the city of Anoka. And it makes for a neighborhood that gets very diverse very quickly, and I think people in Anoka have adapted really well to the different diversities that that happen in this community just because of the amount of affordable housing that we've got. Now, again, all the organizations that we have in town that reach out to others and are working with different groups must continue to be supported.
Thank you. Brian West?
Thank you. That's a tough, tough question. I wished I had the answer. I could do a magic wand and it would go away, but we do have it. So culturally, I think the city does well. The city of Anoka has asked the park board, create a cultural subcommittee, and we do have multicultural events that go on in the community with concerts, et cetera. But more importantly, when the high school students had a peaceful rally, I went up and listened to them, and I was moved by the fact that how taken back they were by the events that occurred. I asked in conjunction with Police Chief Peterson, with Principal Farley, that they bring and coordinate students to come to the city council and talk to us about their feelings of being people of color and minorities and what racism means to them and how it is in the city of Anoka. The council listened, and last night, we're continuing our Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Thanks. It has been proposed that the Anoka Human Rights Commission be disbanded. What is your position on this and why? Jeff Weaver?
Well, as Brian just said, the council voted last night four to one to continue the Human Rights Commission. It's, you know, it's an interesting subject, and I know there's going to be a lot more discussion on its structure and what its mission is going to be and who's going to be involved, and I think we all need to stay tuned to see what happens as this evolves. But again, last night, the vote was four to one to continue that commission that had been sitting idle for nine or 10 years.
Brian West?
Thank you. My fourth goal is to have all citizens feel safe at home in our community. The Human Rights Commission vote last night was very emotional, and there were people who have some very strong opinions, both for and against. What I believe though is that in 1990, our Anti-Crime Commission was established. The Anti-Crime Commission was established separate from the city but tied in with the city through the police department. It's autonomous, it has its own fundraisers, and over 30 years, it's raised nearly $750,000 for youth activities and anti-crime-based activities. I think the Human Rights Commission is a direction that that can go, to be autonomous of the city of Anoka, to be able to go out and allow people to be interact and have their own say and how it goes set with the city. But for now, we'll have the Human Rights Commission and we'll see how it plays out.
Sam Scott?
Thank you for the question. Like we mentioned before, it was voted on just the other night. If I were on city council, I would have voted for to keep the Human Rights Commission going. It's been mentioned that it had been dormant for years. That might be a result of a lack of engagement by currently, by then city leadership. Like mentioned, it has been 10 years or something since the last meeting. So in order for something to be successful, it needs to have the buy-in from leadership. And that's one thing that if I were elected city council, I would make sure that our Human Rights Commission maintains its legitimacy and whether it goes down the route in the future of turning into a outside of city organization or maintaining into city organization, just to make sure it has the teeth and the authority to continue its mission. Thank you.
Thanks. What is your position on spot zoning? If you need me to describe what that is, let me know, but that goes first to Brian West.
Well, we've seen spot zoning in the city of Anoka for many years, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, but overall, my position on spot zoning would be not to have that. I think we have lost some very historic pieces of architecture in this community to spot zoning. One is the Carnegie Library, but one that many people don't think about is our old and former courthouse with the wrought iron fence around it. St. Stephen's Catholic Church, the Methodist Church that used to be on Jackson Street. As you drive in some of the rural communities in outstate Minnesota, you see the preservation that those communities have had of those architectural gems, and that I wish we had in Anoka. I am for a more organized zoning position and more organized building in that zoning areas.
Sam Scott?
Could you please explain spot zoning?
Sure. It's, I hope I can do this right. Basically, it's an area zoned within a larger area that can be different than that and may not be conforming actually to the master plan.
Sure. Absolutely. You know, as it relates to that kind of zoning, I would have a tough time supporting most spot zoning ideas, I would think. Overall, I mean, I think there's a lot of benefit to having mixed zoning uses, making sure that we have the ability for our residents to be able to walk to places or bike to places and not only drive places and be a food desert. Things like bringing in a grocer into town and having a very strong interrelationship between our residents and our business community, I think helps make Anoka stronger, and that's the kind of zoning I would propose as a city council member.
Jeff Weaver?
Zoning is a tool that is used to help develop a community and is driven by the comp plan. The comp plan gets renewed every 10 years. If spot zoning is going to be taking place, it goes through the process of the planning commission, goes to the city council, it may have to have a comp plan change, and there's a lot of hurdles that must happen, and it usually is for a specific use which may not be the best in the long run. And that's why you do a comp plan to have a blueprint of your community. And you can see in town, you have apartment, little aplexes popped in all over this town, and that zoning, not sure what they did back then when they did it, but they did it. And one of the things that we did many years ago when I was on councils, we downzoned a lot of those R4 areas into R1 to keep the neighborhoods intact.
Thanks. Currently, all city, all council positions are at large and equal representation across the city is not assured. Would you support changing this to a ward system? Why or why not? Sam Scott?
Well, thank you for the question. That's something I hadn't really considered. However, overall, the city has maintained its population for many years and it's been at large for as many years. I think there is some value to going to a ward system. Overall, it would help the various different communities that we do have that exist in Anoka to have better representation for certain parts of the city that have been, I wouldn't say neglected, but have, there've been other parts of the city that have been prioritized over other parts of the city. I think going to a ward system would help to alleviate some of the differences you might find in the city of Anoka, but that's a very good question. That's my position on it. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff Weaver?
I am opposed to a ward system, and it's very simple. When you have a city that's only six and a half square miles, which is the size of Anoka, somebody that's up in Fadler's Fourth up on the northeast corner, or somebody over in Mineral Ponds in the northwest corner can call all five council members and get their ear instead of just trying to pick one that may not be as engaged as the other members are. So it gives the taxpayers five opportunities to bend somebody's ear to try to get a result than just to get one who then has to encourage the four other members to come along. I like the at-large because it gives the taxpayers more opportunity to have a voice with the entire council.
Brian West?
Thank you. I'd oppose a ward system. Frankly, I like the fact that anybody in this community can call me and say I have a concern or an opinion or whatever the case may be. I want you to tell me what it is, and I frankly think I thrive on the fact that I'm able to call somebody that doesn't live in my neighborhood. And I think I know the city well enough to understand as a whole how it functions and the various neighborhoods and what they are doing. When you have a ward system, you simply, it's in the best interest of your area first. I think by being at large, the community as a whole, the city of Anoka, is at our best interest, or at least I hope it is.
Suppose a new resolution is on the agenda for the next week, and residents have expressed considerable objection to it. What would you do? Jeff Weaver?
Well, that's a great question because that's the beauty of the open forum at a city council member or city council meeting is people have a voice and they can come up and voice their opposition to whether it's a resolution, an ordinance, or any other item that's on the agenda. And if they know that item is on the agenda before it gets to the meeting time, they can share that with all five members if they want to instead of just one if it was a ward system. So I like the ability for people to have that voice. A lot of communities don't have a televised open forum before the meeting. Some are before the meetings even take place. So it's important that the taxpayer and the residents have a voice to the city council at the city council meeting.
Brian West?
Yeah, thank you. This is your city. This is the city of Anoka. It's not Brian West's city. I'm one representative that's been fortunate enough to be elected to the city council, and I've at times written letters to the editor stating the fact that, for instance, our budget process is starting. Please be involved. Please be involved in your city government. You don't have to be an elected official to be involved. If, but the way that we do business in the city of Anoka is through resolutions and ordinances. The way that we know how we should do that business is by listening to the people who are telling us pro or against that resolution or ordinance. I think it's a fantastic way for people to voice their opinions, to know what's going on in our community, and I look forward to it on a regular basis.
Sam Scott?
Well, thanks for the question. I think overall, some of the key things to do in that situation is to have good communication early and often to make sure that people know what's going on, when it's happening, make sure it's easily accessible via website. If it's something that's a big concern to citizens, to reach out to our communities, especially the ones that, whatever ordinance or whatever resolution it might be impacting, to make sure that everybody knows what's going on and how it's being played out. In conjunction with that, having as many open door meetings as possible to make sure that people feel that they're not being excluded from decision-making process and make sure that, hey, you're a taxpayer too, you can have a voice as well. It's not just people sitting around and thinking about these things and discussing it behind closed doors for everything when it's possible. Thirdly, if it's, you know, a very major issue, also potentially consider a town hall for these types of events and table discussion for a town hall. Thank you.
What are your ideas to increase city revenues? Brian West?
Well, that's a tough question. I mean, city revenues means that maybe the city is in business, and we are in business in a couple of different aspects, whether that be the liquor stores, the electric utility, whether that be the golf course. I think first and foremost, our electric utility is something that has really been of importance to this community. It was brought up earlier, and the fact is that we need to be the most competitive that we can be in the electric utility business because if we lose that business or if there's an opening that occurs where utility, other utilities can service our Enterprise Park or Federal Cartridge, the idea is we have to be able to be competitive to allow our companies to succeed. If you take Federal Cartridge, for instance, if we lost them as a customer, that would be a very negative to the city of Anoka. So to continue to create the revenue that we have, we have to manage our business correctly.
Sam Scott?
Well, thank you very much. That's a great question to ask. Some of the ideas that I've had include improving our housing stock, making sure that we have dilapidated homes, homes that may have been condemned, to try to tear them down and build something new that fits with the community, fits with the historic charm of our city, to improve our tax base there. Outside of that, attract more businesses and people to downtown Anoka. A lot of people want to live here, raise a family here, and do business here. That includes maintaining our parks and our roads and all of our public infrastructure. So when people come to town, they're like, this is a nice place. I want to be here. Things like doing our community events, like our Light of the Tree Ceremony, I've gone to them every year, and every year I hear people in the audience talk about how great this event is, and it gives us an opportunity to shine and get more people in town to, you know, to invest in our community and to expand our tax base. Thank you very much.
Jeff Weaver?
Generating more revenues for the city is a great question. One of the things that we stayed focused on before was to make sure we started putting non-generating tax properties back onto the tax roll. So that was a big piece of the puzzle. Enterprise funds, electric, golf, golf course, liquor store, those are all enterprise funds that generate funds. The electric utility services customers in parts of Coon Rapids and over Champlin and Dayton. Can you imagine? We're billing over customers and receiving revenue from non-residents. That's a pretty neat deal. That's a great business to be in right there. So keeping ourselves competitive, putting non-generating tax properties back on the tax rolls, and encouraging new businesses to relocate here are going to be healthy for our community.
Thanks. How would you handle a disagreement with city staff? Sam Scott?
It's a great question. I've had disagreements with my own staff, with people when I used to be in the service, and just throughout my life. My overarching method when I deal with a disagreement is to talk to the person one-on-one, making sure that first off, there was no miscommunication that may have happened. That, in my opinion, has been some of the biggest causes of disagreement. That, in my opinion, has been some of the biggest causes of disagreement is miscommunication over time, and that builds up over time. Developing a good rapport with staff, making sure that you understand who they are, where they're coming from, that they understand who you are, where you're coming from, and having that professional relationship, you know, extend to all aspects of how you engage with them. Thank you.
Jeff Weaver.
That's a great question. When you're an elected person, you must follow the Charter of the city of Anoka to the letter of the law. And the Charter states that a council member has only one person that they report to and is not to give any directive or interaction with staff members, and that one person they're only responsible for is the city manager. So if there was an issue, the right thing to do is to go to the city manager and let the city manager do the disciplinary or have the discussion with the staff member, and the Charter spells that out very specifically in the Charter, and a council member must follow that. It's the city charter.
Brian West.
The direction of City Council is not to tell individuals, staff members, how to do their job. Our direction is to give the city manager direction, and then the city manager displaces that direction to the staff as a whole. And so we are, as Mr. Weaver said, directed by the city charter to deal with our city through our city manager, any concerns or complaints that we receive. For instance, if I receive a complaint, and recently I did, about a tree that wasn't removed, let's say, from a trail, I got a text and a photo on that. I sent that directly to our city manager, and then he, in return, sent that on to the appropriate staff members. So I'm supposed to go through the city manager, and therefore, that's the direction that I go through.
Thanks. There's one more question here, and that's it. And that question actually has to do with the COVID-19 situation. How would you use this office to promote public safety and safe interactions to minimize the spread of COVID-19? Jeff Weaver.
Well, here we go. Put on my mask, and as you can see, we're all socially distanced, and we all have our masks up here. Brian, Scott, put your mask on. We can show the public that we are. The staff of the League of Women Voters is all masked up. So I think, and you have wipes everywhere. I think this forum and the folks that have put that on have made every effort, and I think the staff has a pretty, in the city of Anoka with all the employees, has a fairly strong policy on what is and was not allowed and what to do, and all we can do is do our best practices, and hopefully, this goes away soon.
Brian West.
Thank you. We have an emergency operations director, and that is Police Chief Eric Peterson, and he took this very seriously. We, for many months actually, were following the state guidelines essentially explained out by the governor's office. We didn't open the pool until later in the year. We didn't have public meetings or we were asked to zoom in until it was deemed safe by the governor's office himself, and then we have gotten weekly reports and even daily reports from our emergency operations director, Chief Peterson, on the growth of virus in the city of Anoka, which I think there is about 253 cases and so forth, and then also updates in the county. So it was taken very seriously. Last point very quickly was if our police and fire department did get the virus and it went rampant, it would be very difficult for our community to stay safe and secure. So we took it very seriously.
Sam Scott.
Well, thank you very much. COVID-19 is an issue that affects everybody, and it's important that our city leadership express those concerns through their own actions, things like that. We've mentioned before, you know, we all have masks here, and we definitely want to practice our mask discipline. Some things we can do as a city overall is public education. That's a big piece of what, you know, we can do to make sure that our citizens are well-informed of the risks and what they should be doing, things like, you know, making sure that we have a wear masks on our billboards, to provide masks to our local businesses and anywhere that's an indoor public space or private space that's not your own residence, so people who can't afford masks can at least have them and partake in our businesses that exist in Anoka right now. Things like that might include for, let's say, our homelessness, our homeless population or underprivileged population, to have the city, you know, provide those masks at a pickup spot potentially. And those are some of the few things I think we could do to help promote health and safety with COVID-19. Thank you.
Thanks. Now you have one minute for your closing statement, and we'll start with Brian West.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to thank again the League of Women Voters. This election is going to be interesting. I believe that what we have before us is the continued growth of the city of Anoka, the continued success, not only for today or the next four years, but really for the future. My grandson and his mother and father, a young family in this community, are exactly what we want to have in the city of Anoka, and that excites me to have them here along with myself and my wife. My son, who is an active-duty Air Force airman, would be here, but he's serving his country at this time. But my hope is that he comes back to Anoka and wants to come back to Anoka. I want people to come to Anoka to enjoy our rivers, to enjoy our community, to enjoy our events, our neighborhoods, and all that it has to offer like it offered me as I was growing up. I ask for your vote in November, and I appreciate your votes in the past. Thank you.
Sam Scott.
Well, thank you again. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, as well as to the citizens of Anoka for your interest. I'm asking for your vote this November because I have a passion to see Anoka prosper now and in the future, and I believe the city needs new leadership and a new voice to respond to our community's needs, as well as to make the city a better place for future generations. My background in civil service, business, and volunteerism in our community puts me in a position to best guide the city forward. I want to thank you for your time, and please consider voting early this year. Thank you very much.
Jeff Weaver.
Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum to let the candidates express their thoughts and opinions. Anoka has a long tradition of keeping its tax burdens to the taxpayers who both reside and do business in Anoka at a very affordable rate, even while providing the top-notch services we all cherish, admire, and expect. It's a simple philosophy I will follow every day. If the taxpayer's successful, so is the city. Preserving Anoka's history and traditions are constant challenges, which will need a strong City Council member who can think outside the box. I am that person. Being a public servant is a privilege I take very seriously. Come the November election, I would be honored to earn your vote. Again, my name is Jeff Weaver. I'm running for a seat on the Anoka City Council. Please visit my Facebook page, Weaver for City Council.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for sharing your views with the public by participating in this Meet the Candidates. Thank you to our cosponsors, the North Suburban Optimist Club and the North Metro Chamber of Commerce. The League of Women Voters has supported informed voting for over 100 years. In the year 2020, we have many options for how we vote. Exercise your right to vote. For election information, visit mnvotes.org.